Call this meeting to order at six fourteen. If I could have councilors Aquilina and Hoyle move that council does now rise and reconvene from closed session at six fourteen P M without report. We have one staff report this evening. Oh, sorry, all those in favor? That's carried. We have one staff report this evening, six point one. I'm going to read this out. I'll have a mover and a seconder. I'll read it out and then we'll turn it over to the C A O to take us through this. So six point one is the servicing, the East Side Employment Lands Report twenty twenty five dash one eight five. If I could have councilors Bodnar and Bruno move, the council received Development and Government Relations Report twenty twenty five dash one eight five. The council direct the mayor and clerk to execute the following agreements once finalized and when the conditions have been met, as well as all necessarily necessary related agreements in order to facilitate the development of the East Side Employment Lands, known as E S E L, water and wastewater purchase agreement with Asahi Kase, an agreement with the Niagara Region establishing a cost sharing arrangement for the required engineering, design services to design infrastructure and perform required studies and reviews associated with crossing the Welland Canal and surrounding area. An agreement with the Niagara Region outlining the city's contributions to facilitate the construction of the Welland Canal Crossing Project for up to twenty four point two million dollars, providing the Niagara Region agrees to take ownership of all pumping stations and forest mains in the E S E L once they are operational and once the city has satisfied any grant and or borrowing commitments. A construction agreement with Peters Excavating to complete the linear asset installation, provided that such award is within the budget of the water and wastewater purchase agreement with Asahi Kase. A construction agreement for the wastewater pumping station as required per the development agreement executed last November by the city, one forty developments, Asahi Kase and Rankin Construction, provided that such award is within the budget of the water and wastewater purchase agreement with Asahi Kase. Interim financing agreements required for construction financing up to twenty million dollars. And the council directs staff to implement a public engagement campaign regarding the establishment of two government business enterprises, G B Es, including a holding company wholly owned by the city that would own shares in the E S E L Water and Wastewater District and a district company that would own and operate the water and wastewater systems in a new water and wastewater district connected but separate from the city. Mr. Bowles.
Thank you, Mayor. That was a long recommendation and thank you for reciting all of that. Council, you have the report. We prepared a couple slides tonight. I'm going to thank the whole team here, whether it be our manager of communication, our director of development, our managers of in Public Works for infrastructure, our director of Public Works. Everybody's done a great job putting this together. If there are questions, I'll rely on all of them to help me answer them as we go forward. So we won't take long to go through all these slides. It's just real high level of what the report says. If I get the clicker system right. This is a new clicker. It's looking great, but it's not clicking for me. I probably broke your clicker.
Okay, I'll just do the slide.
That's okay. Tap me through. So presentation outline, I think you can see there. Port Colborne, let's just take a quick look at the total project and what we're trying to do here. So next slide. Our mission, vision, corporate values, everything that we've done here and everything we do as council is always following our mission, our vision and our corporate values. Our next slide here really zeroes in on the strategic plan that council set. And what we're going to talk about tonight is really about achieving that strategic plan. We have checkmarks on all buttons because all of the five main pillars are being achieved here, but the dotted line, we tried to get really creative here and really highlight the two areas of economic prosperity and sustainable resilient infrastructure. Those are the key areas that we're really zeroing in on with this recommendation. Next slide. So as we look at the East Side Service Lands, we'll look at the next slide and we want to be very clear for council of where these are. The East Side Service Land is at the top middle part of the city. It's located there in blue. We've even provided a secondary map that really gives you a little more detail of where the infrastructure that we're going to be talking about tonight is going to be built. We have that big circle there you can see on the presentation. That's where the pipes, and we've talked about this at many presentations at council, will be crossing the canal. When they cross the canal, the city, and we've talked about this as well on multiple occasions, and I know the public's aware, we will be contributing as well as the Niagara Region will be contributing. The city's portion is estimated at twenty four point two million dollars to bring the piping across. The good news is, and I know we've talked about this as well at council meetings, is the city's been able to accumulate two thirds of that in grants. So two thirds of that twenty four will be paid for by grants and the other one third will be paid for by development charges. There won't be any new costs to any of the current rate payers to bring the water and wastewater across the canal in that district. Next slide. In creating the East Side Employment Lands, we've worked with a number of partners listed here and maybe the biggest partner that we've had after starting the project has become Asahi Kase. We didn't necessarily put them on because this was the group that we started the project with, but we'll go through the agreement. Asahi Kase has been by far our biggest partner in making this service land possible. Our next slide. So the opportunity, as we talk about moving forward with this project, and we've talked about this at council before, is by developing the East Side Service Lands, we're opening up almost a thousand acres of industrial land. Going to be great for economic prosperity and that's the key pillar within our strategic plan. We will be able to expand our assessment base, which will be able to help with the long term financial viability and sustainability of the city as well. Those pipes, and we've talked about this and it's in the report, will bring an opportunity to open up three thousand new homes on the east side of the city by having that secondary line. And I think the citizens of the city of Port Colborne realize right now there's only one line that crosses the canal. This secondary line will not only add redundancy, but is going to have the opportunity to service another three thousand homes, which again will grow the assessment and the tax base of the city. Our next slide. When we look at this and we look at this project and we look at the report that you have in front of you, I just want to touch base really quickly on the timeline. The timeline's been very fast. Asahi Kase came in in May of twenty twenty four and we've been working ever since November of twenty twenty four. You remember, it's only a year ago, there was a groundbreaking and since then, the city's been working with federal and provincial governments to be able to create grant opportunities. We did get the SIF fund, which is thirty eight point five million dollars, and you're going to see at the next council meeting some more information with respect to that. It's fifty fifty funding and that's going to have a major support and bring the pipes across the canal. We've had the opportunity to work with Hydro One with respect to this project to ensure that Hydro is going to come into this area. Asahi Kase has been a great leader in making sure that has been able to happen, not only for the industrial, but for their own plant as well. If I go to the next slide. We have two slides. I really appreciate Public Works for putting these in. Just to be clear, and I think the public knows, Asahi Kase is well underway. I think there's a phrase that we use on this project that time is not our friend. We've said that many times before. Construction has already started on some of the piping. Council's approved up to eight million dollars in initial funding to start these projects. This is one of the pictures. You can even see that the line to be able to cross the tracks has been removed temporarily to bring the pipes across. The next slide. You can see in this slide, again, just additional work already started, a lot going on in that area. And I know because I've received many messages from residents asking how things are going and you can see that, and these are just a couple of pictures to show what is going on in that area. Next slide. So when you look at this and you look at our timeline, this summer was really a pivotal period where we started that construction. We did the four point three million early works. September, we did another four million dollars. In between all of that, the province came forward with additional grant fundings of eleven point three million dollars. And today we're talking about, which the mayor has already indicated with what our recommendations are with this report, is to move forward with the water and wastewater agreement that's attached. The construction works agreement, dealing with signing agreements for the subcontracting costs, crossing the canal and pumping and forest mains with the Niagara Region and establishing a G B E. And I'm going to have a couple of slides on what a G B E is because after publishing this report, we did get a couple of questions what a G B E is. And full disclosure, the G B E is something, and I'll just remind everybody that might be watching in council, we have had two other conversations at council about G B Es, but we'll get to that soon as we get to those slides. Next slide. The transformational timeline continues as we move into twenty twenty six, water and wastewater. The goal is to have that going no later than April one. We have a timeline that's much more aggressive and we think it's going to be much more aggressive than that. We will be signing the wastewater pumping station contracts. The pumping station contract should be done and we should have the wastewater moving by September thirtieth of twenty twenty seven, no later, although again, we have a much faster timeline. Some people have written in just and asked me what is one forty developments? They're the land developers. They own the land before Asahi Kase did. They're the ones that sold it and part of the construction is that they're supposed to and they have to build certain piping infrastructure from the Asahi Kase plant to where the city is building its infrastructure as well as a pumping station to help move that down. In over that period of twenty twenty six to the end of twenty seven, you'll also see and we'll be back to council with final financing documents and the G B E will be set up finally as a standalone entity. So our next slide. Really, our next slide, let's look at the project financials wastewater contract. I think we've had some conversations with council and we've made some documents public over the last number of months. But as a reminder, the E S L project will be about thirty two point four million dollars. That's dealing with the water contract that we're looking for approval today. Crossing the canal is twenty four point two. That's dealing with two thirds being funded by grants, one third from development charges. And then the region is going to bring the water across the canal. All in, that's a hundred and thirty six million dollar investment. This is unless I'm corrected by a counselor, I think this is the largest single investment for jobs that this city has had in its history. One forty developments, once they're finished their infrastructure, they will be transitioning it to the city with no cost to the city. We will be able to maintain that and we built the financing model and the operating cost model going forward that will be able to maintain that infrastructure and replace it one day. So our next slide. Really, I think what's important and before, you know, council says to staff to move forward and approve the water agreement, let's just point out a couple of comments that are in the water agreement. The first is really with respect to operating costs, the water agreement will cover off all the costs with related to running these pipes. The second is it's going to cover off the infrastructure cost of thirty two point four million plus the cost of interest and borrowing. The water agreement is for twenty years. We have worked in a contingency because just like citizens of the city know is there is I N I in any system and there is water loss in any system. So we have looked at best practices and worked in a contingency with respect to that. We've also allowed and built in a provision that should we bring more people onto the line down the road, Asahi Kase will have the opportunity to earn a rebate with respect to their initial capital investment on this line. Since they're up fronting the whole line, if we're going to bring somebody else onto the line, it made sense that they were able to capitalize and recover some of those costs. Next slide. Water and wastewater agreement included the concept that we would be able to set up the G B E and those are, I'll give you a couple of slides on that very shortly. The one forty developments component, we're going to connect to where the one forty development builds that infrastructure, but just to be clear, it's up to the one forty development to develop, to build that infrastructure. We do have protections with respect to termination and default. So we have tried, we have built the agreement. So should for some reason, Asahi Kase not be able to continue in some capacity, we do have protections to be able to recover our financing costs. The future pumping station expansion, there is the possibility that the current pumping station that's being built right now needs to be expanded down the road. Should we add people to the line or should Asahi Kase get even larger? If so, we do have agreement that we would be splitting those costs with whoever the new users are and with Asahi Kase specifically if Asahi Kase is requiring the extra capacity. And we do have a guarantee that they do have fifty percent of that capacity and that's needed for their plants going forward. So some of the benefits and some people might say, why create a water and wastewater agreement going forward? I think the city and residents here know and council knows that we have had some industry that have come and they've been heavy users of water and then for whatever reason have gone forward and maybe potentially built their own plant or changed their water usages. And that's had some very significant impacts and changes abruptly on our water system. By building out a twenty year agreement, we have that clarity to be able to move forward and we have the ability to be able to finance that construction with that agreement. So that predictability and sustainability is something that I know council has given staff direction from the very beginning that they were looking for. Also, as mentioned, it's the ability to be able to borrow against this agreement. Thirty two million dollars is a lot. Thirty two million dollars is $32 million is more than the total debt the city currently has today. The city currently only has $25 million debt. So being able to do a project like this and having an agreement that we can use to go to the financing agencies is very strong. And this also provides that capacity and visibility, not just for the city, but also for AK. So a couple of reasons to why we've actually moved forward with the water and wastewater agreement. The next slide. The next slide really gets into, and I guess we'll go to the next slide, really gets into what is a GBE and why. So I just mentioned that the city only has $25 million debt. We're going to have to borrow $32.4 million to do this project. It's going to be fully secured by this water agreement. What we're trying to do, and what we're proposing, is to establish a GBE. It's also called a municipal service corporation. So legal terms, they might call it municipal service corp, accounting terms, a GBE. We'll go to the next slide, and I'll explain what this is. So why would you really do this? One is it creates strong corporate governance. It gives us the opportunity to establish a couple of board of directors that are very focused on making sure that we expand and grow the east side employment lands. It also makes sure that we separate the costs. So we have this agreement to pay for this infrastructure by setting up the GBE and moving the agreement into it. We can ensure that any costs that are associated with this will stay within that GBE, separate from the current water and wastewater system that we have. It means that residents of Port Coburn aren't going to find any extra costs because of building this new site. Also, we can borrow. When we borrow within the municipal service corp or the GBE, we have the ability to borrow it and not record that debt necessarily on the city's books. So as we establish that, why does that matter? So from a councillor or from a resident, I think it's a great, it'd be a great question to ask. I'll ask it to myself, and I'll tell it to you. The reason, the reason why you would do that is, a corporation, specifically a municipality, we have certain rules of how much debt we can have. And we all know that we want to spend funds on the water wastewater system to stop the leaks, to stop the INI, to stop the water loss, so that way we can fix our current system. So by establishing this separate corporation and not having that debt attached to the city, we, the city, have the ability to issue more debt to fix our own current problems. That's where this GBE is so important. And in the coming days, we'll be establishing, should council approve this, some public communication on this. And we're going to invite anybody that wants to learn more to come into City Hall to have a conversation with us on just why it's so important to keep this, the debt, separate from the rest of the city, and the city still maintains its borrowing capacity, to move forward with the current infrastructure projects. Next slide. Water wastewater system, I just want to assure everybody, I've been asked this, and because we presented about six months ago, I think, I think our BLG was here with us at the time, and our lawyers on this, and they helped present on it as well. The water wastewater system will remain publicly owned. Like, the city will own 100% of this GBE. Council is still going to establish the board of directors. There's still fiduciary responsibilities. There'll still be articles of incorporation. There'll be a shareholder agreement to which council will provide certain direction to the GBE. So this is still a publicly owned and controlled asset. Next slide. A couple of items I just wanted to note on the GBE financial overview. In establishing and moving the debt in, and also establishing with the operating costs, all of that will run through the GBE. And the key here, I think, that we just want to point out is, and a couple, for any financial folks that might be watching, it will be cash flow positive over the life of the project. This is, in Port Coburn's terms, the first time that the city has gone forward and actually approved an asset and have a life cycle costing or replacement plan. So as we move forward, we will be building a reserve, and we'll be able to maintain it. And if we look multiple years down the road, we'll be able to replace this. And we won't have to come back with rate adjustments, impact the current ratepayers with respect to any of that. It's built altogether right from the start. Our finance folks and Don Grant Thornton, we appreciate them. They tell us the interest coverage ratio is 1.11, which I'm sure means a whole lot to a whole lot of you and the residents that are watching today. But that is where we need to be for the banks and for the lending. And again, the cash flow model is positive going forward. So next slide. I know this is a lot of information, but we just wanted to be fully transparent of how this would work. During the buildout on our current model, there really is no GBE right now. There's the region supplies water, we send wastewater back to the region to clean. AK, we're going to be, what we're doing is, we're building the infrastructure to hook up to AK. We have a contractor agreement with us. 140 Development is going to transfer assets to us. That's kind of the normal system to which we operate. That's the current structure. We go to the next slide. Soon as we institute the GBE, it does get a little more complicated, but I would caution everybody, it's not that complicated, in the sense that there will be a service agreement. You can see right there between the city and the GBE. The assets are, instead of getting transferred to the city, will get transferred to the water wastewater, the GBE. And there'll be certain assets, and we talked about that in the mayor's, in the recommendation that the mayor read, will be moved up to the region, specifically the pumping stations. And just in case the residents don't realize, and I know, because I know council does, all the pumping stations in the city are already run by the region. So we ultimately are going to move the pumping stations that are being built here up to the region, and they'll continue to operate those. The contractors during the buildout phase will contract directly with the city. Ultimately, the lender will move into, with the water component, and the reimbursement will occur through there. And then when we're done the construction, I guess the last slide will show us, the contract costs will move down to the GBE, and post-construction, the GBE will sit by itself with its debt on its own books. Last slide is the conclusion that councillor read, sorry, that the mayor read. I went as slow and as fast at the same time as I could, because I know the number one criticism is sometimes I'm happy to talk for two hours, but I tried to go as fast as I could for you all. Any questions? Please send them my way. Thank you.
Councillors, councillor Brunner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Brian. Brian, people may be hearing about this municipal service corp or a government business enterprise for the first time. And I think until maybe a year ago, council maybe never heard of this unless they stumbled upon it someplace. Can you, look, we're not the guinea pig for this, right? This isn't the first time it's ever been done, or something we dreamed up to make it sound good. Can you give us a little background on how these work? Well, you've already told us how it works, but just to let people know that this isn't a first-ever concept of this that we're doing?
Through the mayor, to the councillor and council, this is not a first round at this. This has been done in many jurisdictions. In the Niagara region, this is kind of new, but across the province and Canada, this is not new. This is being looked at to do even more with municipalities going forward. The greatest analogy I can give to it is, most municipalities, at one point in time in their lifetime, had a hydro. And a hydro would have been set up the exact same way as what we're going to set up this specific water district. And again, the only reason we're setting up this water district like this is, we're trying to make sure that the infrastructure that we're building out there and any costs are completely separate, are completely transparent of separate from the current system, so the city can continue to work on fixing the current system.
Yep. Just before you go on, I just want to go to councillor Brunner, only because the question you asked the CAO, we've been at this before. So I'm going to have Gary, because he was directly involved with it when he was a councillor back in the day.
Thank you, Worship. Through you to the CAO. The analogy that I saw up on the previous slide, where you have the city, the holdco, and then the water distribution company, reminded me a little bit of when we leased Port Coburn Hydro, effectively sold it over 10 years. In the interim, we had like Port Coburn Energy, the city, and then we had fiber, and we actually still had hydro while we were leasing it. So that tree sort of looked similar, but I don't think it was a municipal corporation. And I know we have Mark here, who was involved in that. And so maybe for all of us, I'm wondering if it's a possibility to explain what the difference was back then when we did that 15 years ago now, I think, and this? Because there seems to be some similarities. And that was very successful. And I don't even know then if we were, we were new to that. I think a lot of it was even going on then, and that's 15 years ago, so I don't know if Mark could.
So through the mayor, to the councillor, I'll introduce Mark Rogers. He is our lead lawyer. He works for BLG, and he is, has been instrumental in, I think, the advice he's given to be able to move forward on this. And I think the councillor is referencing the fact that Mark was actually, has been involved in other transactions that the city has been, so he's including the hydro. So I'll pass it to Mark, because he's best to explain that, since he did that transaction.
Yes, thank you, councillor Bruno. So briefly, back in 1998, the province of Ontario decided to restructure the entire Ontario electricity sector. And in those days, Port Coburn Hydro was essentially an arm of municipal government. Some had commissions, others there were departments of municipality. And at that time, the province required through legislation that they, that you transfer that commission into a corporation under the Ontario Business Corporations Act. And this was all done under legislation called the Energy Competition Act. So that was set up, and in Port Coburn's case, you're quite right, we leased that utility to Canadian AgriPower for 10 years, and then they bought it out at the end, where the city was the shareholder. So that was done under the Energy Competition Act. What we're proposing today, and what you'll hear about next time, this comes under the municipal act, not the Energy Competition Act. So it's the same principle, setting up a corporation, but these are more constrained than on the electricity side. But what we are seeing around the province is not only, I'm involved in several of these water corporations that are being set up, but we're also seeing it for rural broadband, for affordable housing, for workforce housing, and for renewable energy projects. And the province is setting this up so that municipalities do have more options. And to Brian's point, this municipal debt limit that every municipality has, it's a problem, because we all know we have more needs as municipality than our debt limits allow. So by allowing us to set up these companies, it becomes self-sustaining, you have full cost recovery, which has always been an issue in the water sector in Ontario. Just to give you a sense, the latest number I heard for the water wastewater deficit in Ontario across the province is $150 billion. So I think you are going to hear about more of these types of corporations coming forward, publicly owned, but a new financing approach to get through the challenges that we're all facing. So I hope that's helpful.
Thanks, Mark. Councillor?
Thank you, Mark, Brian, and Gary for bringing that up. It's nice to know that there is some background to this, and, you know, we have a lived example of it that was very successful. So if anybody wants to come up to the open house we're going to have on this, that would be great, we could explain more there. One more question. Brian, you mentioned 140 Development that is going to build the line from the AK plant to where our line comes and stops. The one thing I didn't hear was that, and if you could confirm it, that that has to be built to city standards before we would take that over. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, through the mayor, to the councillor and council, that's correct. And our Public Works department is having conversations with respect to that group and Asaykase to ensure that that does occur.
Okay. Thank you, councillor. Further questions? Too late, sorry. No, go ahead, councillor.
I have to go home now. A couple of questions, thank you very much. In the long run, would the city see any profits from this corporation? I know at the end, it may if we get rid of the corporation, but in the process of once everything is established, being built, or does everything go to the corporation?
So through the mayor, to the councillor, as we've designed the corporation right now, there's no necessarily profit. What this is, is this is a corporation that is self-sustaining, that will cover up all the current operating costs, and will have enough funds to replenish or replace the assets as they need asset replacement. So from our standpoint as a municipality, that, this is one of the first times we've ever done not only a project to this size, but we have a full asset life cycle costing model developed. It is possible, depending on what water rates are, when future users come onboard, it is possible that there are surplus dollars in the corporation. So if we are to add people down the road, that could occur. But I think it would be really hard to speculate, like what that would be, or count on anything at this point in time. We'd have to see what the connection charges are going to be, what the cost for them to connect, and what those rates will be at that time. Plus, as pointed out, the water agreement as being negotiated, and I think it rightfully so, with Asaykase financing the whole project, will receive a portion of any water rate charged to a new customer to make sure that they get reimbursed for the part of the infrastructure they're not using. So there's a number of things that would have to come in place before, I think, the corporation would benefit. I would point out to city council, the key here is that the current taxpayer, the current ratepayer, isn't having to pay for this infrastructure. This infrastructure is fully being paid for with respect to those that will be using the line down the road. And I think that's, that's the key. In addition, the current taxpayer and the current ratepayer gets a secondary line, that redundant line that will come across that is a backup to the holy side, should the other line ever not operate.
Just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank you very much for spearheading this, I guess. And I know, Mr. Mayor, even yourself, spent many hours, nights and days of phone calls, and I truly appreciate it, and it's nothing but a great asset for our city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Brunner?
Thank you, Worship. Mark's last part was one of the things I was going to say. Thank you all very much. I think sometimes when we look at business opportunities or opportunities for the city, that we look at what the rate of return is, and to councillor Bagio's point, right, will we profit from this? But I guess I'm going to make a statement, but I guess I need some facts first. Along that route of the water and wastewater line, we have unserviced land for an industrial park. And there's also private lands along that route. And I'm wondering, I know the mayor's mentioned it in many speeches, and that, what is the, what acreage do we own and do private owners, individual landowners or corporations own around that line?
So through the mayor, to the councillor, and I'll look to Gary Long maybe to help me, but as we pointed out at the beginning of the presentation, that total district has about 1,000 acres that can be developed as, over time. I think the city has about 80, 83 acres in that, within that district, that could potentially be sold at some point in time. So if the question is, is there a benefit potentially to the city to potentially sell some land or grow the tax base? I think I would look at it from that perspective. It's not that we are making, it's not that you're going to make money off of water. Like, water pays for water. Wastewater pays for wastewater. It's about recovering the cost. But the tax base can be enhanced and grown by bringing in more and different type of industry that can grow jobs and grow industry itself. And I think that's, that's the opportunity that the city has to make a stronger, sustainable financial future moving forward.
Yeah, that's where I was going with the way you answered that question. For me, the benefit of this and, you know... For me, the benefit of this and, you know, so glad that AK came to Port Coburn, but the fact that they established at the actual outer limit of the municipality meant that the service them, all this land had to have water, wastewater, all utilities go the whole length of 140. And, and I'm glad the agreement reimburses them as people come onto that line. But, you know, you can imagine the lift on 80 some odd acres of our raw land to being industrial serviced land. I mean, the lift between unserviced land and fully serviced land is pretty substantial per acre times 83. So I think that's the big dividend, if I could say, in this is that ourselves and others are now going to be able to build along that line and those tax dollars and those jobs and that assessment, and I think is going to be like really the benefit of doing this way. And who gets to service that land at no cost? You know, every industrial park we've built, we had to service it and then hope it got filled. Now we're effectively getting it partially serviced and it increases the value of the attractiveness of Port Coburn. I mean, it's literally, we're servicing them, but we're potentially servicing 500 acres. And, and that's huge to me, at, at no cost to the taxpayer.
Mayor, I know, I don't think there was a question there, but if I can just, to follow there, Prasad, which I know many in council have met before, our representative from Asay Kase, I thank him for coming tonight because Asay Kase stepping up in what they've done for this community to transform it with this agreement and coming here, it, it's, it's, it's second to none and it's going to have an opportunity to really make even a better Port Coburn moving forward. We, I think we owe them a huge thank you.
Great, thanks Brian. Any further questions? So before I go to the vote, I've got a, a statement to read. Over the past 18 months, city council, senior leadership, support staff and Niagara region representatives, along with key contributions from community partners, have worked tirelessly to complete this informative water infrastructure project. This marks an historic milestone in Port Coburn's development. Despite some back and forth along the way, all parties remain aligned and committed to resolving any challenges that arose. The result is a strategic partnership that integrates our water and wastewater systems, ultimately strengthening Port Coburn's freshwater supply. This initiative includes a replacement of outdated 1960s era water infrastructure in the south end of the city. The upgrade provides a critical connection to better serve our residential, business and industrial sectors on the east side of the canal. Most importantly, the project unlocks 1,000 acres of prime commercial and industrial land with an additional 1,000 acres identified for future development. Business developers will benefit from unprecedented access to highway, rail and water transportation right at their doorstep. On behalf of myself and council, a special thank you and congratulations to CAO Brian Bowles, Director of Development and Government Relations Gary Long, Director of Public Works Steve Shapowski, and their outstanding teams for their dedication. Your hard work has gone unnoticed, has not gone unnoticed and is deeply appreciated. And finally, a sincere thank you to our valued partners at Asay Kase for helping bring this project across the finish line. As Brian mentioned, Prasad Putigunta is here this evening. Prasad, thank you for your faith and investment in the city of Port Coburn. We appreciate it. With that, members of council, all in favor? Onto bylaws. We have bylaw 8.1, bylaw to adopt, ratify and confirm the proceedings of the council that corporation of the city of Port Coburn, if I could have councillors Baguio and Danch, move that the bylaw to adopt, ratify and confirm the proceedings of the council of corporation of the city of Port Coburn be passed and enacted as presented. Questions? All in favor? Carried? At this time, this meeting is now adjourned.